Good evening, everybody. Happy to be here. Excited to be here tonight to share some information that we've gathered. And I appreciate the city's willingness to engage in the process and provide the opportunity tonight to share this information back out with all of you as well as with the public. We'll do our best to be mindful of your time. We have a lot of data, a lot of information that we'll try to cover in a pretty short amount of time, but I think we have it presented in a pretty concise manner. So about five months ago, the Sauk Rapids Rice School District began a series of listening sessions with the public, really to try to get an understanding of the priorities and concerns regarding the future of our schools. Some of those, in fact, a fair amount of those concerns revolved around facilities questions. And so we dove into a process of going through a series of meetings, about 29 public listening sessions. We approached groups that entailed staff members, business owners, civic leaders, and really any stakeholder that would be willing to have a conversation with us. And as well as having in-person meetings, we also published an online survey as well as a direct mail survey to families to try to gather as much information as possible. All this information now has been tabulated, packaged, and we're going through a process of reporting back out to the community to share what we've learned from it, and then also start tracking what are the next steps? Where do we go and what direction does the information lead us towards? And so tonight's information is really the collection of that information as well as a report out, and then at the end I'll be able to conclude with kind of what the next steps in our process would be. So I'd like to introduce this time Dave Bergeron and Lynn Dyer from ICS. ICS is a consulting group that's working with the school district to help in this process to gather the information and be able to package that. So Dave and Lynn, I'll invite you forward and I will go start clicking.
Thank you Superintendent Sinclair. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Bergeron. I'm one of the principal owners of ICS Consulting. And just real brief, we specialize in working primarily with governmental entities, with a lot of school districts, and helping them to address facility and educational infrastructure issues. And a big part of that in the start of that process is understanding what are the community view of the school and what are the priority issues within the school. And as Superintendent Sinclair said, we had a series of listening sessions, about 29 listening sessions. Go ahead. What we're going to share tonight is the results of those listening sessions. And Lynn will come up. We also did an educational adequacy assessment of all the facilities, and Lynn will share the results of those. So you can kind of see where those listening sessions were held. And here with the Sauk Rapids City Council, for those that were involved, was on April 23rd. We kind of break those listening sessions up into three types. The first is community listening sessions. The second is neighborhood listening sessions. And the third is internal listening sessions, internal to the school district. So these listening sessions, if you were part of the one here, is not, hey, what do you think of the school or what do you think of this? It's a series of questions that are asked, and then folks fill out post-it notes for a bunch of those questions. And what we find is when you talk to parents or community, when you talk to teachers and staff, when you talk to board and administration, and when you talk to students, they're the four key stakeholder groups, and they have a different view of what happened of the school. But when you ask the same questions or similar questions to all those groups, you start to see a pattern of what are the key value drivers. And so tonight we wanted to share some of the things with the questions, but one of the questions is also what are the top facility needs? And as part of that, those folks then go through and take sticky dots and prioritize those. And so a lot of this tonight with this is going to be what the prioritization of the facility needs within the district. So one of the questions we ask is, if you could change one thing about your district, what would it be? And I'm not going to read to you what you can read, and I do want to stress, this is a summary for your information tonight. We're taking all of the information that came out of all of these listening sessions, and it'll be posted in one large report that goes out on the district microsite, and that is onestormonefuture.com. And you'll see that again. So all of the information will be posted there, as well as this summary presentation tonight, and any information gained throughout the process. You can kind of see some of the results from one of the questions. Better communication, and you could see that across all of these. Smaller class sizes, especially at the elementary, another common thing. More parent involvement, more mental health professionals and programs. What are some of the strategies to use to overcome challenges in your district? Again, clear and consistent communication, both internal and external. Engage the community in the process. More space, particularly at the lower class, lower the class sizes. And work and collaborate with community resources. What needs to be done in the community to successfully pass a referendum? Transparency. Again, goes back to communication. Ask for needs versus wants. Open and honest communication. Separate any questions you have to the public and be clear in the communications route. So we often ask, when you look 10 years into the future for the school district, what do you want your school district to look like? And the question is kind of, what do you want in the newspaper? What do you want posted online? You can see some of the common responses that came to that. Certainly a school that people want to move to this community for. First it started the best district in central Minnesota, then it was the best district in the state. And that's great for folks to want to achieve that. Go ahead, Aaron. So these are a little bit of an eye chart, and I'm not going to go through each one of these. We said we broke these listening sessions up into community. These were a lot of the community listening sessions, and a key question was, what are your top facility issues? And then we asked those folks to prioritize. So for the Rice City Council, we had two groups from Rice Community and then the Rice Chamber. Those were the things that they prioritized. And again, this is all in a report. For us to go through this, you'll be sitting here for two hours. You can kind of, this is what those folks prioritized. That was the Rice Community, Sauk Rapids Community, the Sauk Rapids Chamber, the county commissioners, you, the city council, the Rotary, and the township. What I do want to point out on this one is what your responses were for the city council here in Sauk Rapids. The number one priority from a facility standpoint that you prioritized was more elementary space. Evaluate the need for more athletic facilities at the high school. Replace Pleasant View. And that's another thing that we saw pretty consistently across all groups. Planned, long-term, LTFM is long-term facility maintenance, including facilities, parking lots, and athletic fields. Have a long-term plan. And then look at an option for Pleasant View as an early childhood, families, and education center, and remove that from Hillside. And again, those were the responses from you as the city council. Across all of those community listening sessions, these were the things that just kept coming over and over as a pattern. Do something with Pleasant View. Utilize the current land and building spaces. Address transportation issues, and primarily around drop-off and pickup at the elementary sites, but other traffic flow issues across the district. The need for more elementary space. Evaluate the current childhood space. Evaluate the need for athletic facilities at the high school, and create a long-term facilities plan for the district. So those were the common themes we saw across the community listening sessions. The next is the neighborhood listening sessions. And these were listening sessions that were held at each of the schools, so the neighborhoods from those schools, those folks were invited to attend, whether it was Mississippi Heights, Pleasant View, Hillside, or Rice. As well as the middle school, the high school, and community education. And again, everybody went through, it's very similar process from the facility side, and those were the priorities. Now with the neighborhood listening sessions, there were common themes, just like the community. Again, do something with Pleasant View. Get the most out of your current buildings and spaces. The need for more elementary classroom space. Practical improvements. Address needs versus wants. And better utilization of the spaces that you have. So you start to see some similarities between the community and the neighborhood. The third area was the internal folks. Now, a little bit easier to get to internal folks, they're kind of a captive. And so we had high school, two different groups of high school folks. We had high school students. We also had high school non-certified staff. And when we say non-certified, those are usually the primarily paraprofessionals within the high school. We also visited with the school board, the adult basic education group, and a district administrative group. And these were the things that they prioritized. And we also looked at Hillside, early childhood, Pleasant View paraprofessionals, and the middle school paraprofessionals. All of the things that, or the things that became most common across all of those groups, pretty common, do something with Pleasant View. More classroom flexible learning spaces. The need for more elementary classroom spaces. Improved additional special education or calming spaces. And you'll note, Superintendent Sinclair, one of the fastest growing areas of schools is your special education needs within the district. Address the middle school pool. And if you're not familiar, we have a middle school pool that is not being utilized right now other than space, and we have space needs throughout the district. So it's kind of do something with the middle school pool. More early childhood space and improved traffic flow or drop-up pickup. So when we look at those, and again, 29 different listening sessions across your community, across your school district, and we look at what are the common things that came out of all of those different groups? Do something with Pleasant View is certainly at the top of that. These are not necessarily in order of priority. The top two, do something with Pleasant View and more elementary space, you'll see all the groups outline those. More early childhood space was two out of the three groups that had that as a common denominator. Address traffic flow, pickup, drop-off, and get the most out of your current building and land spaces also had two out of the three groups that thought those were the priority items. So what this information does is it helps the school district, and it's one piece of information. Lynn will talk about educational adequacy assessment. This is listening to the community and the stakeholders. We're also doing a complete facility assessment to be able to identify, okay, we have needs, what do they cost? How do we prioritize those based on financial considerations? So these are all pieces of information. Some other issues that came up that were fairly consistent, but not necessarily across the board, ADA compliant playgrounds. You'll find internal folks are very in tune to ADA compliant, as well as some parent groups, but the public at large generally, that's not something that folks are as in tune to. Address or outline a long-term facilities plan. Better utilize the space at Hillside. Look at or evaluate sports facility at the high school. Address the middle school pool and the need for additional or improved special ed spaces. One of the final questions we asked was, what do you do with Pleasant View? And the three options were, would you remodel on the existing site? Would you build new on the existing site? Or would you build new on a different site? We added other because there were some other folks came up with other things that could do. And you can see by the responses out of this, out of the listening sessions, that building new on the existing site was two to one versus building new on a different site. But certainly of this small, this subset of folks, building a new Pleasant View versus renovating it. Now, the district as part of this process will have costing for what it would cost to renovate Pleasant View, what it would cost to move it to a different site, or what it would cost on the existing site. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn, and he's going to walk through the educational adequacy summary. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Dyer. My title is educational adequacy consultant. So first thing I want to make sure we clarify is, the term educational adequacy has nothing to do with an evaluation of the staff in their teaching or the students in their learning. It is strictly an evaluation on the spaces where that learning takes place. So just want to make sure everyone understands that. So we've developed 18 categories that we use for this evaluation, and 17 of those categories are with the elementary school, 18 categories with middle school and the high school. And you see the 18, these are all areas that we evaluate, the space needs. And we incorporate into these 18 categories the guidelines that have been established by the Minnesota Department of Education. So we incorporate for each category, the guidelines that they've established. Now, those are strictly recommendations, they're not anything that is mandated, but they're guidelines that give school districts direction on how much space, what kinds of spaces each one of these categories should have. What we do is an exercise with our certified staff, we have them put their responses to each one of the categories on post-it notes. Areas of perceived needs or improvements, we have put those on multicolored post-it notes. And then you'll see on your screen, the category or the comment that was made, the frequency or the number of post-its that we received with that comment. On the right side, you'll see perceived satisfaction. So that we want to know the good things about the schools and how the staff members view the spaces in which they teach. So therefore, there's some comments there, and again, with the frequency. Now, we use teachers because we believe that, you know, they're the ones that live in these spaces for a good part of the year and have a pretty good feel for if that space is meeting their needs for them and their students or not. We collect every post-it note from every staff member, and we log that into that spreadsheet. Then we do a second activity. What you see on your screen is something we call the Big Five. We ask the staff to identify their top facility needs. Now, on the left side, that's a bit of an eye chart, that's an example of data that's been collected. So what we do is, we take their top needs and we score them on a scoring matrix of priority number one earns five points, priority two earns a four, and so on. The little X's represent the number of first responses that we had for priority number one. Then you'll see we have a total point score, and finally, we identify the number of responses that we received for each of those comments. On the right side, that's the charted data that we put into the spreadsheet. You'll see that for each one of the schools that I walk you through here in just a moment. You won't see the data on the left side, but we want you to understand where that data came from for the chart on the right. You'll notice that the first five are color-coded that identifies the top five for that particular facility, and then all of the others down the line. So the purpose of doing this, we take the information from the staff that they've given us as feedback. My partner, Glenn Chido, and I walked through every building in your school district. We took our information, combined it, and compared it to what we had gotten from the staff, with the whole purpose of identifying a color code for each one of those 18 categories. If the category is given a green, that means that it meets most or all of the criteria developed by MDE. If it is given a yellow, a yellow isn't bad, a yellow simply means there's questionable adequacy. Some things maybe meet requirements, or not requirements, but meet guidelines, but maybe some things don't. We call it one foot in, one foot out. But it isn't that it's bad space. If it's given a red, a red means that that's some space to look at that doesn't meet the criteria that we feel is, and the MDE feels is appropriate for developing a good quality education for your students. We then take that information and we shared it with your building principals. We sat down with each one of them to get their feedback before we gave a final color code to the buildings. So let's walk through your district, and starting with the high school. We're going to focus primarily on the reds, because really the reds are the areas that you want to move off a red to a yellow or to a green in color. And you'll see in each of these, starting out with the high school, security and supervision is going to be red district-wide. Now, it's red at the current time, but your district is working on a plan to change that with secure entrances and cameras and those kinds of things. So that'll change, but you'll see in the report that we put together, we evaluate the way it is now, and currently that would be a red. Moving down to the high school, you have a very nice high school facility. So it's the newest building in the district. It would be understandable to think that it would have the color chart that it does. There's a couple of areas of concern, starting out with site suitability, the green space and athletic space. It's not that you don't have an adequate amount of space, it's just that it's not developed. You have the softball field, but you don't have a baseball field, you don't have maybe a soccer complex, or tennis courts, or other additional facilities that would be probably consistent with what most of the high schools would have. So therefore, that was a red. Special education, the way your high school is set up with the pods, there's special ed rooms that are interior walls, about 300 square feet, pretty tight space, limited storage, counter space for the number of students that they serve. And so therefore, they didn't meet the requirements that MDE would establish, so therefore, that one was a red. With the Big Five that we asked from your staff, here's the feedback that we got from them. They have a concern about career and tech ed space. Now, it's not the space they currently have, that is very nice space, but you're out of space. So if they wanted to develop an automotive technology, a small engines type of a class, there's just no place to put them. So therefore, that's a large concern of them. Classroom size and suitability is a concern of the high school. Now, we gave it a yellow, but your high school classrooms in the pods with six classrooms, two are undersized, two are barely making minimum MDE guidelines, and two are slightly over. But you're putting a lot of large numbers into those smaller spaces. Although you have a very nice collaboration space outside of those classrooms, it's still a little bit tight. Staff was a little concerned with that. Site suitability that we just talked about, they've identified special ed space as being a concern as well, and then of course, security and supervision. Moving on to the middle school, a few areas there. The classrooms, your core classrooms are pretty much all undersized. They all run about 800 square feet. For a regular classroom, we're looking for 850 to 950 square feet. For early childhood, kindergarten space, 1,200, minimum 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. So middle school, core classes are undersized, and then of course, your security. Otherwise, again, a very nice facility. Feedback that we heard from staff, the building security and supervision, even though they're aware that that's being addressed, that was still a top concern of theirs. Washrooms. The location and the number of washrooms in that facility, that's, there's a very big facility, long hallways, proximity and location of some of those washrooms are maybe not meeting the needs of the students as well as possibly they could be. A few HVAC issues that they had some concerns with, and then again, classroom size and suitability, recognizing the fact that many of those classrooms are very crowded and they're being a little undersized. And then with that staff, doing something with the pool. You have about 5,600 square feet of where the swimming pool is, and it's used for storage right now, so maybe a little bit better use for that facility could be identified. Moving on to the elementaries, to Mississippi Heights. Now, as we get into these, you're going to see a number of them that have NAs next to them. That just means that those categories are not appropriate for elementary schools. Normally, they don't have auditoriums, performing arts, or the career and tech ed space. But at Mississippi, the music classroom, very small, about 620 square feet. The music classroom that was there is currently a fourth grade classroom, so music is very tight space, low ceilings, not a lot of storage. Special ed and support services space, again, pretty small spaces, 220 square feet. You've got an EBD room that's a little over 200 square feet, a small calming room, but they're all interior walls, not much for natural light. And that's one of the things that's become a real, a real big issue with classrooms today, is having the opportunity for natural light. So some pretty tight spaces there for those folks. And you'll kind of see that consistently across the district, that the special ed space is an area of concern in a number of schools. And then hallways, lockers, and washrooms. Proximity and the number of those washrooms is a concern at Mississippi Heights. But the thing to remember is that Mississippi was never built for those little people, for the elementary kids. So where those washrooms are and the number of them, there really could be more for that particular facility. So here's the feedback from Mississippi staff, classroom size and suitability, because some of those classrooms again are undersized. There are more oversized than under, but on the second floor, the interior classrooms are relatively under. Classes on the end are a little bit over because some of those were science rooms when that school was originally developed. Building security and supervision, again, identifying special ed space and the need for larger space there. Washrooms, and then staff collaboration space. They have a staff room on the main floor, but they have a very small one up on the second floor. Going to Pleasant View. Pleasant View is a school in your district that appears to have the most number of needs, starting out with classroom size and suitability. Now, the size of the classroom isn't the issue with Pleasant View, they're a little over 1,000 square feet. But the fact that they have limited storage, no countertops, that becomes an issue, but the biggest issue is not having the doors. Okay, so for that reason, with the number of students that it serves, that makes that a red. Cafeteria and the kitchen area, cafeteria over there is about 2,600 square feet. They run, I think, four lunch shifts. They start fairly early in the day, very small space again for the number of students that they're serving. Main office and nursing area. My partner and I were in the office on a day that was relatively busy, but the administrative assistants are right on top of each other, there's no privacy. We had three or four students in the office and it became very crowded, so a very crowded office area. Science and art rooms typically, elementary schools don't have separate areas, they share space. This one is pretty undersized for the number of students that are being served, so therefore, that became a red. Student lounge, there is none that has been turned into a classroom, so the student, or the staff lounge is actually out in a hallway. Commons and breakout area, there isn't any, there's just no place to put kids right now with the current situation at Pleasant View. Parking, bus drop-off. Generally, bus drop-off across the district is pretty good, but it's the parent drop-off that becomes very congested, and some safety issues for kids there, and that would be the case at Pleasant View. Library and media center, again, very, very tight space, some walls have been put up from when that building was originally erected, which also interferes with some of the HVAC and the airflow. Special ed support space, that, right now, their special ed is being conducted in the tiered area of one of their pods, and then any other small little space that they can identify. So really stressing the special ed kids and staff in that building. And then finally, hallways, lockers, and the washrooms. Hallways over there are pretty narrow, 10-foot hallways. You've got washrooms that some of them are not ADA compliant, and just a lack of, we need a few more of those in that facility. So staff feedback, classroom size and suitability, the suitability is the issue again overwhelmingly from the staff. Identifying the need for special ed space, again, the building security and supervision, storage and cabinetry, those kinds of things, and then HVAC, that's a bit of a problem in that facility. Moving on to Rice. Rice classroom size, majority of the classrooms there are undersized. 13 of 19 classes in that facility are undersized. Kitchen and cafeteria, again, cafeteria is about 2,600 square feet. Again, they run four lunch shifts. Out of that 2,600, that really isn't all usable space because they have a milk cooler and along with some other equipment that is out in the cafeteria area. The security supervision, again, parking and bus drop-off, again, parking is somewhat congested, and along with the bus drop-off area. Parking lot's very small, there's a sharing agreement that you have with the adjacent church, but that's not owned by the school district, it is used by the school district during the day. Special ed space, again, relatively small spaces, interior walls. And then hallways and lockers, the hallways aren't the issue, but the washrooms, again, in that facility, there's one identified staff washroom, and not all of the washrooms are ADA compliant, and again, a need for more for students. So feedback from the Rice staff, washrooms for adults and students was an identified issue with them. The classroom size and suitability, again, recognizing the size of their space compared to the number of kids that they serve. Storage and cabinetry, hallway lockers, hallway lockers are relatively small, and then ADA accessibility. um, hallway lockers are, are relatively small, and then ADA accessibility. Um, Hillside, uh, the early childhood and the ABE program, um, a lot of NAs on this one, because again, many of those categories just don't apply. Um, classroom size and, and the suitability, those, those rooms are right around 750 to 800 square feet. For early childhood, we should be looking at 1,200 kind of as a minimum for the, uh, for the early childhood area. Um, moving down to the staff lounge, they have a very small space that they use now. Um, some of that is going to be readjusted over the summer, but the space that they move into is still going to be undersized for really what they, what they need and for collaboration space. Uh, parking, drop-off for, for buses, they don't have buses, but they do have vans, they drop off on Fifth Avenue, they go in door number one, and when you have all of the traffic with the vans and parents dropping off, becomes a very congested area. Um, special ed space, they really don't have a designated special ed space, they can use the viewing rooms that are attached to each one of the classrooms, but they're down to only two of those left, um, because they've been identified as other spaces. So they really don't have a special ed breakout space or pull-out space to work with their kids. Um, hallways are fine, washrooms are the biggest issue over there, with the, the hall, the, um, washroom down at the end of the hallway, um, for the men and the women, and then the sinks on the outside. What was kind of interesting was that there's a storage room for the custodial staff, but to get to it, you have to walk through the men's stall, so that was a little unique. Uh, let's, let's go back one more. Okay, ABE, um, on the other side of, of Hillside, uh, classrooms, again, very small, 560 square feet for the adult ed. Uh, main office is on the opposite end of the building where you come in and it's not, it doesn't have personnel in there, um, all day long, because some of those staff actually teach as well. Um, staff lounge and collaborative space, they, they really don't have any for that facility. And, uh, again, the washrooms, there's one washroom for male and female, for both students and staff. So they share the same, the same washroom. Uh, feedback that we had from the Hillside staff, uh, they identified the, the classroom size and suitability being the issue, they've identified the bus or the, the van drop-off at the front of the building, not having the collaboration space that they really would like and could use, and then the need for additional special ed support space. So here's a list, uh, side by side of the, of the buildings in your district, and what we've tried to do is identify some commonalities throughout the district, and you'll see, pretty much across the board, um, classroom size, um, and suitability is, is an issue, the security, which you're, you're going to be working on and changing that. The bus drop-off or the parent drop-off, for the most part, more so than the bus drop-off area. Um, special ed, again, across the district, and then, uh, washrooms being the, the biggest issue down in the bottom. And then Pleasant View in the middle with, you know, the, the greatest number of needs and, and the most number of reds. So this is the website that the presentation can be viewed, I know we kind of did a, a speed run through this, but, um, we wanted to, again, be respectful of your time, but, um, that gives you a little bit of feedback from the results from the educational adequacy side. Questions that Dave or I could answer for you?
Anyone from the council have any questions? A lot of information. Got a lot of work to do, Aaron.
There's a lot, lot to be done. Um, I'll just share, the next step in our process is to take this information and start trying to figure out some possible ideas of how we could address some of these areas. And then the next step is really another report back out, uh, to the community to try to get feedback. Uh, so on January 25th, we're going to be hosting an open house, I'm sorry, on June 25th, um, at Rice Elementary, an open house, where we're hopefully going to have, um, an opportunity for the community to come in and look at some potential ideas of what solutions might look like. And then on June 26th, from 11 to 1, and then 5 to 7, here at the Sauk Rapids Government Center, um, another open house, to try to gather feedback, to get reaction from the community, uh, on whether or not some of the ideas or solutions for these different areas, uh, might make sense. Uh, and really, once again, this whole process has been founded around the idea of allowing the community to express their desires and their wishes for the school system, and for the school system to respond accordingly to that. Um, so we'll, we'll find out here at the end of June, what sort of ideas we can have, and then, uh, ask the community to give us some input, whether or not we're on the right track. Um, and encourage individuals to feel free to visit the website, onestormonfuture.com. Feel free to email myself or call the school district. Uh, this whole process, we want to just continue to collect information, so if you have an opinion, or thoughts, or ideas, please let us hear from you.